We need to order seven sixteen roll call please.
Councilmember Bernhard.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Abesal Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Proton Tucker.
Here.
And Mayor Alparano.
Here. Please stand with the flag, religions and what is.
Guionas.
Please stand, ready, begin. Thank you. Maureen, we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we would ask, we were expecting to receive. We anticipated but haven't yet received it, so we would ask that you table item C two for a future meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, how about city attorney, any report on closed session?
Yes, the city council met in closed session, discussed public employee performance evaluation of the city manager. No reportable action. The council discussed conference with labor negotiator. City manager with each, addressing each employee organization, direction was given to the negotiator. Anticipated litigation, one item was discussed, no reportable action.
Thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. Well, moving on to public comment, there is a time limit of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the city council on these matters. And with that, matters not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the city council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name, address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation, it is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the city clerk's office in writing forty-eight hours before the meeting. Do we have any public comments? See none, did we have any via email?
No public comments via email.
Thank you very much for that. Moving on to presentations, we're going to do a certificate of recognition from Miss Karina Beltron. So from what I'm understanding, Miss Karina Beltron went to the National Spelling Bee in Washington DC.
Hi.
Did amazing, represented, representing our city of Imperial, so Karina, big congratulations and thank you, so. If you'd like, I'd like to come forward to the microphone, it is open, and then I'll do the certificate and we can come down and take pictures.
Give her a word.
I'm afraid to give her a word because I might not know how to spell it.
Like, yeah, you're right.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, how you doing?
I'm good, you?
Now, we're doing good, I'm glad that you're here, and we all are glad that you're here.
Thank you.
Can you tell us about your experience when you went? That had to have been amazingly exciting.
Um, it was a, it was a fun experience, it was cool and had a lot of activities. And the competition itself was fun too, and yeah.
How many people did you compete against?
Two hundred forty-five.
Wow.
Can you tell me the word that you won with?
Here in the county.
Mm-hmm, it doesn't matter, either one, which, what was the hardest word you had that helped you win the competition?
Probably my meaning, my winning word was obnoxious.
I like it.
That's, that's a, that's a good word there.
You say, my, your mom was my son's teacher and she might have described him as obnoxious.
Well, congratulations, and so we do have a certificate to issue you, and it says a certificate of recognition proudly presented to Karina Beltron. For winning the nineteenth annual regional Imperial County Spelling Bee and for representing Imperial Valley at the twenty twenty-four Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington DC. Congratulations on the remarkable achievement, so congratulations.
Thank you.
So let's, we'll go down here, but we'll take a picture.
Thank you, Kristin, the emblem looks wonderful over there, thank you Public Services.
We now have the photos though.
Yeah.
Yay.
I like it.
Oh, that does look so. Look at that. I love.
I love Janelle's shoes. She's so chatty. Yeah, I can't see. They're like linen. Mm-hmm. Look at her shoes, they're long curved.
That's something. Yeah, makes me happy to see you.
All right, thank you. And so moving on, our proclamation, presentation for National Parks and Recreation Month. So we have a city of Imperial proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, so we do see our Parks and Rec staff here. Says whereas parks and recreation is an integral part of the communities throughout our country and the city of Imperial, and whereas this year's theme is where you belong. And celebrates the many parks and recreational professionals, recreation professionals across the country. Across the country foster a sense of belonging in their community by providing essential service and activities for all ages and abilities. And whereas parks and recreation promotes, promotes health and wellness by improving the physical and mental health of all community members. And whereas the activities that are provided by our Parks and Recreation Division such as summer camps, youth sports, signature series events contribute greatly to the quality of life in our community. And whereas the city of Imperial, city council recognizes the importance derived from Parks and Recreation resources. And express our sincere appreciation to our Imperial Parks and Recreation Division. Therefore now, now therefore I, the mayor, Robert Amparano, on behalf of the Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of July twenty twenty-four. As Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Imperial, passed and adopted on this third day of July twenty twenty-four at a regular meeting of the Imperial City Council, so congratulations, good job.
Uh, the Park scene put together, just a really short slideshow for the council and for the public, so we'll play that and then we'll go through the motions.
Appreciate it.
Love me the.
Thank you, that is great.
Hi, everyone. So you probably noticed that we, if it wasn't going by too quickly, you probably noticed that we added a new event to our lineup of our signature event series. It's called Carnival. We did receive a lot of interest from vendors and from different people in the community, hoping that we could add another downtown event to our lineup. And so that's what we've come up with Carnival, it's going to be like a fun, exciting Brazilian carnival type theme, so hopefully everyone enjoys it.
Thank you. Questions?
I didn't notice the date, when was that?
February twenty-second.
Cool.
I didn't notice the Blues, Brewers and Barbecues on it, wasn't it on there?
Yeah, so it's the last one of the event series, it'll be March twenty-second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we got any other questions?
For our summer programs, we also wanted to mention, you guys probably saw the slide, but July twelfth, we'll be having our dive-in movie at the pool. But we're also going to be celebrating the city's one hundred twentieth birthday, so we would like to invite all members of the council, if you guys want to come out, we will be handing out free cupcakes. To celebrate the city's birthday to all the attendees, so it's going to be free to the public if you guys would like to join us. And then we'll also be having our end of summer bash again on August ninth. Both of those events are from seven to ten at the Imperial Pool.
Nice. What was the date of the first, the anniversary? July twelfth. Thank you. Questions with that? Okay, so we'll meet you guys down there. So, once again, thank you to all the staff for all the good event, great events that we have. So with that, moving on to our presentations. We have our nine, Imperial Valley nine eleven stair climb presentation, so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Carlos Pritones, behind me is Edgar Guiones, we are members of the Imperial Valley nine eleven memorial and stair climb committee. Our committee is formed of members that represent the fire community, the law enforcement community, and public and private organizations who are dedicated to ensuring that the Imperial Valley never forgets September eleventh, two thousand and one. We do this by hosting a memorial stair climb that honors, respects, and pays tribute to the three hundred forty-three FDNY firefighters. The sixty law enforcement personnel, and the ten emergency medical personnel who made the ultimate sacrifice as a result of the terrorist attacks on that Tuesday morning in two thousand and one. This year marks the twenty-third anniversary of September eleventh, and for us here in the Imperial Valley, we will host the eleventh annual nine eleven memorial and stair climb event. Our event will be held at the grandstands of the Imperial Valley Fairgrounds on Saturday, September seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. The memorial ceremony will begin at seven forty-five PM, followed by our stair climb at eight PM. Our memorial stair climb. Our memorial stair climb is a way for the community to come together to remember the heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice on September eleventh. Each participant climbs or walks the equivalent of a hundred and ten stories of the World Trade Center, carrying the name and photo of a fallen hero to symbolically complete their climb. At this time, I'd like to share a quick video of our event. So early registration for our participants is now open. It's twenty-five dollars through September sixth. And there will be an onsite registration for thirty-five dollars on the day of the event, starting at six PM. Part- participants that register before August twenty-third will be able to receive their event T-shirt on the day of the event. Uh, registration can be completed at our website, which is W W W dot IV nine eleven dot org. In addition to stair climb participants, we are also seeking sponsors and vendors to join us in making our event as successful as possible. Sponsorship opportunities come in four different levels, ranging from three hundred forty-three dollars, four hundred thirteen dollars, nine hundred and eleven dollars, and two thousand and one dollars. And each level is significant, uh, due to three hundred forty-three fallen firefighters, four hundred thirteen is the total firefighters, law enforcement personnel and emergency medical personnel, nine eleven for the date, and two thousand and one for the year. The different degrees of, of, um, of sponsorships are also determined with advertisement, different types of advertisements, uh, event memorabilia, and sponsorship dinner invitations as well. In addition to sponsors, we're also seeking vendors. Vendors can register for our event at no charge, but will agree to donate ten percent of their earnings during the event to the Imperial Valley nine eleven Memorial and Stair Climb Event. Funds raised for this event will go to the Imperial Valley nine eleven Memorial Stair Climb five oh one C three that will provide charitable assistance to local firefighters and their families, promote scholarship opportunities for the members of the community, and will assist in the development of the Imperial Valley nine eleven memorial as well. In closing, I want to thank you again for this opportunity to present this information. We invite everyone from the Imperial Valley to come out, whether it is as a spectator, a spectator, a participant, a sponsor, or a vendor. We appreciate the assistance in having the Imperial Valley observe and remember this special day. Thank you for your time. I'll open up for any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't know. Maybe we can, I know in years past, we, Imperial has created a team. I don't know if we can do that again. Um, maybe something we can do to compete against our other cities that are always there. So I don't know. We can do that.
I, I think our, uh, engagement committee is looking into, uh, try, uh, attempting to put together a team.
I appreciate that.
Thank you again for your time, and we hope to see you on September seventh. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. All right. With that, well, we will move on to, uh, our item B, our consent agenda. So it's all items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the City Council with one motion without discussion. Any council member or any other person requests that items be considered separately, that item will be taken up at that time determined by the mayor. So.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. With that, we're moving on to action items. Uh, C, uh, C one, removal of crosswalk on South Imperial Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Street.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Fernando Williams from the Community Development Department, and I'm gonna be presenting to you this item, uh, which is the removal of the crosswalk directly in front of City Hall along South Imperial Avenue between Fourth Street and Fifth Street. Part of our comprehensive effort within the department to enhance our infrastructure in transportation, uh, we did an assessment of the crosswalk directly in front of City Hall. And given that the safety of the people transiting our cities, our streets, sorry, within the city, uh, we did a thorough, uh, analysis on whether to keep it or removing it. One of the first impacts that will, uh, come with either the maintaining or keeping the crosswalk is the parking. Uh, if we choose to remove this, uh, crosswalk here, we would have, uh, additional parking along the east side of South Imperial Avenue in front of the City Hall. And if we choose to keep it instead of removing it due to, uh, the Assembly Bill four one three, which effectively bans twenty feet of parking, uh, bo- on both ends of the crosswalk, we would lose three parking spaces. So by keeping this crosswalk, we would have to eliminate two parking spaces to the south and one to the north. And if we choose to remove this crosswalk, we would have two more parking spaces, uh, where the, it is currently located. That's regarding the, the parking on South Imperial Avenue. Also, one thing to consider is the infrastructure modification that will come with this uh, removal or maintaining of the crosswalk. Because if we, if we opt to remove this crosswalk, we would have to just simply remove the depressed curb where people cross on the ramp and re- and replace it with cross gutter, vertical curb, curb and gutter. And choosing to maintain this crosswalk, currently it is not an ADA compliant crosswalk because there's no ramp on the west side of that crosswalk. So we would have to modify it and build a new one, impacting also the residents who live in front of that, uh, crosswalk. And regarding the accesses, a- access points, sorry, people already have access through the corner on Fourth Street. So there's an ADA ramp where, where people can access to the City Hall or through the parking lot that's, uh, north of City Hall. The estimated cost for removing this crosswalk would be about eight hundred and fifty dollars. And the estimated cost for keeping this crosswalk, which entails building the other part of the crosswalk would be an estimated of four thousand and hundred ninety-five dollars. Uh, as part of our assessment, we searched for community feedback, especially from the neighbors that live directly on the west side of Southern Pearl Avenue. And the general consensus was that there was no opposition to removing the crosswalk. There was one resident which we couldn't lo- locate and gather feedback despite multiple efforts. And there was one comment also, but that resident was not a fan of the diagonal parking in general. Uh, but other than that, uh, people were not opposing to us removing this, this crosswalk. Uh, another important factor is that this project would be, uh, categorically exempt from the SEQA Act because it's just a minor alteration to existing facilities. And on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, Traffic Commission recommended the removal of the crosswalk. The staff recommendation, the staff recommendation would be based on these findings to remove this crosswalk in front of City Hall.
Thank you for that report. Any questions?
You said there's another, I'm looking at Google Maps because I, I'm visual.
Uh, yeah.
Where would be the next available crosswalk for that area?
It would be on, on the south, uh, in Ford.
By the police?
Fourth Street. Yeah, by the police, by the police station. And also there, there's ADA access on the parking lot that's in directly north of, uh, City Hall.
It's not a marked crosswalk though, correct?
Uh.
I see the access on the ramp, but it's not like the lines.
It's not, it's not painted.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No question. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion in the second? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we're, we'll table C two to another time. Moving on to item C three.
Mr. Mayor, uh, before you proceed, I'm going to be recusing myself from items C three and C four.
Okay.
And it's just based on location that we're being extra cautious. They're gonna just step out for these two items and then come back. We'll vote without them. Oh, you, sorry.
Okay. So we'll let the record reflect that. Uh, Councilmember Mendoza and Councilmember Burnworth will be stepping out for items C three and C four. Okay. So that C three is, uh, awarded agreement for labor compliance consulting for the seven, ten, fourteen street rehabilitation project on number P twenty twenty four dash zero two. And then Mr. Mora.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I suppose you guys will present the next two items.
Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Uh, this, uh, agenda item is regarding our seventh, ten, and fourteen street rehabilitation project and, uh, is, uh, regarding to award a contract for labor compliance and consulting services, um, to labor compliance consultants of Southern California. Uh, but you may be aware, uh, our project is now moving forward. And the, but part of the process is to have a, a company, labor compliance company, uh, to monitor and enforce compliance with federal and state prevailing wages in, in, in this kind of project. Um, the, the city, not the city, but our department run a, um, request for proposals from companies, local and non-local companies. We published the request for proposals on the website and we sent emails to eight companies. We know we have been working with them before for labor compliance. We received two, uh, proposals, one for labor compliance consultants of Southern California, seven thousand two hundred, and South Start Engineering Consultants for, uh, eighty-nine hundred dollars roughly. Uh, the, um, either the funding is going to be coming from measure, L T A measure D is B one in, in, uh, wastewater. And, uh, we are recommending to award the contract to, uh, the, this is long name Labor Compliance Consultants of Southern California LLC. I'm here for any questions, if any.
Any questions? Mr. Tucker?
No, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. Obisha Martinez, any questions?
None. I'll second the motion.
Got a motion in the second? Please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to item C four. Change order for seven, ten, fourteen street rehabilitation project, bid number twenty twenty four dash zero one. Mr. Mora?
Okay. Yeah. I'll, I'll present it as well. Uh, this item is a change order to install a little bit over three thousand, uh, linear feet of twelve inch PVC water main along fourteen street. Um, we already start the construction of the, of the project. And part of the, the process is to, to pothole for existing, uh, underground utilities. Uh, we knew there are four and six inch water mains along fourteen street. Uh, but based on the experience we had on eleven street, uh, we should be really sure about the condition and depth of the water main. So the, what we didn't know or we discovered in this potholing process is that the pipeline is not only a small size, but it's a asbestos cement pipe, which is a very, very old pipe. This type of pipe was stopped, uh, available for construction early nineteen eighties, which is giving us an age approximately eighty, forty-five to fifty years old, which is the life of this kind of pipe. So a combination of many factors. Um, in addition, the, uh, master plan for water is recommending the installation of twelve inch water pipeline along thirteen street. After a conversation, uh, internal conversation, we agreed that it would be a good opportunity to start, not only to, uh, remove or not use anymore asbestos cement, uh, pipeline, but to increase the capacity, capacity of the area, uh, installing this pipe, which is going to make a, a water loop from the, uh, west side of the city under Highway eighty-six and connecting to a pipeline that is going north, south, and the east side of Highway eighty-six. Um, we run some numbers and the change order is for one million two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which is going to be coming from water funds. Uh, this is, although this is a change order to the contract, this is an item not part of the scope of work as the project is for surface, uh, rehabilitation. It's just the combination of our situation that is actually, um, uh, having us to propose this as a really good opportunity to save some money in the future, remove, um, asbestos cement pipe as part of the inventory of the city, and not create an additional inconvenience to the residents if we install it along thirteen street. I'm here for any question, if any.
Any questions?
I'm just glad you're doing it while they're
Correct.
there and not gonna tear up the road two months after they finish it. So, yeah, good job.
So a question, a couple of questions, and, and you know, I'm not a fan of change orders, but the, the change order on this one is actually, I agree with what Mr. Tucker says, is that it's being done prior to us paving the road. So that, that is a good catch. But to add to that, are we gonna be doing any other, are we looking at, at any, any other street improvements, modifications, curb gutter, anything like that that needs to be done with a new road, whether we're gonna put signage? You know, I know we have traffic issues. I know maybe looking at speed bumps, something that we can do in advance while we're already there.
Uh, we haven't looked at any of the options for traffic mitigation measures on seven, ten, and fourteen. Uh, we haven't, I don't remember having received any, um, complaints, issues, or any traffic accidents in the location. Uh, but we can look at that, um, right after this meeting, um, see if we can add, um, uh, some of those items that were just mentioned. But yeah.
I mean, we have a park there. I mean, I'm pretty sure that we, we can look at stuff like that. I know Seventh has an issue with traffic coming out of the schools. And I mean, I'm just look, trying to look forward because if we're already gonna be in there, we might as well get it all done at once.
Correct. Yeah, we'll take a look at the, uh, the signage, especially stop signs. I think by the park, we have four way stops on sections. Um, maybe not so much at the southwest corner of the Eager Park. Um, but it's, which is not part of this project, but we'll, we'll look at that and, and that's a good catch. Seventh Street might, once it's, um, rehab, we might have.
Freeway.
Correct. So.
And so like I said, I'm not saying make changes, but I, definitely if we can look at it because, I mean, going back and after the fact is kind of heartbreaking. You tear up new asphalt.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Will you bring that?
Bring that.
Welcome back. We're on item C five. Establishment of four classification salary ranges and job descriptions for accountant. Establishment of four classification salary ranges and job descriptions for accountant, building official, cybersecurity administrator, fleet and cer- fleet and facilities supervisor. And this is Christian Smith, human resources manager.
Uh, so, in front of you is an item to approve for the creation of four job descriptions and positions. However, we will be pulling the building official position from this item. Uh, we will be going back and reviewing departmental needs and, um, bringing a revised request back at a later date. However, we would like to move forward with the accountant position at range seventy-five for the finance department. The cybersecurity administrator, that's, uh, rate, salary range eighty-six for the information technology department. And the fleet and facility supervisor position at salary range eighty-five for the public services department. Uh, with the, uh, the initial fiscal impact for this position, these positions was four hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. With the removal of the building official, that total changes to three hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, these positions were accounted for in the budget that you'll be reviewing this evening as well. Uh, and the need for the positions, uh, we had previously discussed as well at the budget workshop last week. Um, and also the backup, uh, attached to the agenda item goes into additional details. Um, all of these positions will fall under the MSPC unrepresented, uh, uh, division. Um, I will stand for any questions you have.
All right, thank you with, for that, any questions?
Then I'll make a motion to approve the accounting, um, cybersecurity administration, and the fleet and facility supervisor.
Yep, got a motion? Two seconds, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to C six, receive and file the independent city audit in fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Mister Monriquez with administrative services.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, before you, uh, item C six, it's, um, the unmodified audit opinion of the city financial statements as they were audited by CPA firm Moss Divian, um, Art Sign, Art, Art Sign. Um, and we have the consultant online, uh, if we have any particular questions about it's a hundred page audit document you have in front of you. And we'll stand for any questions.
Is there a rundown you can give us, besides with the hundred pages that we're there here?
I have some highlights, um, I can go over if you wish.
I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, so, um, so let me start by saying, like Victor already mentioned, our opinion, um, is unmodified. So that's the highest opinion that we auditors issue financial statements, so what's colloquially known as a clean opinion. Um, the only unfortunate thing is the timing, but we're, we're working with John and Victor to try to get caught up as soon as we can, I think we're making great strides to that effect. Um, so with that being said, let me just go over some, you know, high level financial highlights for the year, and it's, you know, fortunately, it's all good news. So, on the government wide side, so this includes long-term assets, long-term liabilities of the city as a whole for governmental activities, so this is all the funds, not including water and wastewater. Um, assets exceeded liability by approximately forty-six million dollars, and that's an increase of three million dollars over the prior fiscal year. And, uh, business type activity increased similarly, three point four million to a total of twenty-seven million dollars. The general fund, uh, which, you know, it's very important to a lot of councils. Um, the fund balance increased three point two million dollars, so it almost doubled to seven point seven million. And now the general fund reserve, which is the, um, unassigned general fund fund balance divided by the current year's um, general fund expenditure, it's sixty percent as it stands right now. So, um, that basically means you can operate for almost two-thirds of a year on reserves alone. So that's very healthy for, um, any city, uh, sixty percent. Uh, typically, you know, we see numbers in the thirty percent range. Um, the only caveat is that since Imperial is a smaller city, the sixty percent is a big ratio, however, you know, one large emergency, like, you know, you guys were talking about change orders on a street repair and it's a million dollars, so things like that can quickly deplete that reserve. So, you know, it's, it's a good thing to have, but, you know, it's, it's, um, prudent to continue, uh, financial, you know, being cons- financially conservative in the future. Um, the only update as far as disclosure goes is that Gatsby sixty-eight seventy-one for pension. Um, the net pension liability decreased about two million dollars, um, in this fiscal year, so we're, everything we've been talking about is fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. It went from about four point something to two point two million. And, um, the, the decrease is basically, the total pension hasn't changed drastically. What's changed is the fiduciary net position, so what's being presented in the twenty twenty-two fiscal year reflects market conditions in the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, so I'm sure everybody's, you know, remembers twenty twenty-one was kind of a banner year for the stock market. So, all the, all of CalPERS, um, investments in their percy, uh, investment pool increased drastically. So, that net pension liability is almost half. However, when you're looking at next year's financials, you'll see that some of this decrease reverses due to market conditions in twenty twenty-two, but then again, in twenty twenty-four, it reverses again, and it's actually, they're doing better than ever at this point, um, as far as I'm aware. Um, the only future disclosure item that we're gonna be reviewing in the next fiscal year is Gatsby eighty-seven and ninety-six related to, um, leases. So, recording, um, right-to-use assets and, 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 uh, deferred inflows for lease receivables and something similar for payable, so that's something that we'll discuss when we're presenting next year's financials. So that's, that's all I had, any questions or comments? Um, I mean, I'll give you, uh, you know, Victor and I and John will give you time to, uh, uh, digest all the details, and if you have any questions right now, or any more detailed questions at a later time, please feel free to field them to us, and we'll give, be able to give you a detailed response.
Thank you.
I would like to add something, Victor, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so briefly, we're, 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 we're presenting the, the final independent audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Um, we're also working on fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And fiscal year twenty twenty-four just ended on Friday, uh, uh, just this last week. So, um, we've got multiple years here, and I think we've been supporting Victor to hopefully get through twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, caught up hopefully by the end of the year. And, and I guess Ben, Ben has been, uh, working hard to try to set up a schedule to allow us to do that. But just one more observation, uh, from the standpoint of positive news, you look at the cash position for the general fund. Uh, six point, six point two million dollars there on page eight of the independent audit. Um, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, it goes up to seven point nine million dollars. And then in, uh, twenty twenty, uh, four, uh, it, it even goes up from there. So, um, there, there's been very positive news from that standpoint, but, uh, there's been some added expenses and so forth that'll change the picture a little bit in twenty twenty-five, but nonetheless, as, as we've been saying, uh, that the city's, uh, been very, uh, conservatively, fiscally prudent, and, um, I think it's reflected in the audit report.
Thank you, John, any questions for the council? All right, so with that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, thank you, John, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Victor, so moving on to item C seven, the approved resolution number twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight establishing the Ga- uh, GaN spending limit for twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and Mister Monriquez.
Uh, Mayor, Council, again, um, this is a resolution, um, back from, uh, proposition four nineteen seventy-nine. This is to establish spending limits to the city of council, City Imperial, um, for adopting appropriations limit for fiscal year June, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, as it stands currently, um, the limit, the calculation is prior year appropriation times inflation, uh, times, um, population increase. So, given that, um, the last year appropriations, fiscal year appreciation for twenty-two was twenty-one million, um, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand. We multiply it by the increase in population, uh, which we have as, based on the California Department of Finance at two point fifty-nine, and the inflation at three point sixty-two percent. The adjustment increase would come at one point three, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. Bringing appropriations limit to twenty-two million, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. Uh, we're way currently, uh, way under this limit. Uh, the figure for this year would be eight million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars, which would be, um, in compliance with the GaN, uh, spending limit. So with that, I have any, any particular questions, um? Let me answer.
Any questions from the council?
Why is it be- below?
Spend a lot.
Below our.
Estimated.
The estimated, the, what we're spending, that, that's actually what we're trying to spend, the, our budget. So, we should be way below the, the limits, so that's general, just including the general fund, um, City Hall part, so it's just a section, we don't include everything.
And Victor, can, can I add one moment, one, uh, comment to that?
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so our general fund budget is about seventeen million dollars, that's the next item on the agenda. Uh, so, you, you're saying, well, i- if the entire seventeen million dollar general fund budget was funded by taxes and only taxes, um, uh, we'd still be below the limit of twenty-two million. Um, the, the GaN calculation doesn't include the entire seventeen million dollars general fund budget as what they call proceeds of taxes. The entire seventeen million general fund budget is not all subject to the spending limit because a big part of the general fund budget is funded by fees and charges. And, uh, there's some, uh, indirect, uh, um, service charges. Uh, so the proceeds of taxes, whatever part of the general fund is funded just by taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, uh, certain state subventions that we get, those are the only, uh, that's the only part of the general fund budget that's actually subject to that limit. So that's why we only have eight point nine million of our seventeen million dollar general fund budget. That's the only piece that's subject to this GaN spending limit. Um, so, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, pre-resolution number twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight, establishing the GaN spending limit for twenty twenty-five.
All right, got that motion?
Second.
Second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you, John, thank you, Victor. Uh, moving on to item C eight, approved resolution number twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven, adopting the municipal budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And it's me, Mister Monriquez.
Mayor, Council, um, bringing back the, uh, the, uh, budget we re-reviewed in the previous two sessions. Uh, made the adjustments from the special meeting, um, to the line items that were indicated. Uh, right now, um, we're presenting the whole budget, uh, it includes general fund, uh, special funds, water fund, wastewater fund, C F D funds, R D A, successor agency, the information technology fund, the C I P budget rollover, and the last attachments was the org charts, which would not be adjusted based on the previous item at C five. So, that would be the only adjustment for the budget would be excluding the already budgeted amount for the building official. With that, I don't know if, if we would have any additional questions or particular questions to any of the attachments.
Any questions from the council?
Good, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Mister Tucker.
Second. Twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven, adopting municipal budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Got a second from Mister Bernworth, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. With that, um, we now have a budget, and so we'll move on to E for reports. We'll start with E one for our department reports, and we'll start with Mister Mora.
Um, quick report on Nekro Road we opened, and we're getting there on the hotel, uh, it's almost completed.
Nice.
Hopefully, they open in, they said about two more weeks, uh, they will open the first floor only. And, and, oh, we'll see, uh, they're working very, very hard to complete, there's a lot of improvements going on there. And on, on tenth street, uh, we have been removing a lot of, uh, curving gutter, we pour some curving gutter as well, so
Just while you're talking about it, I got some complaints from residents saying that they weren't notified um, about the construction going on, which I'm assuming they were, but.
Um, yes, um, notices were delivered, uh, we posted notices on the curving gutter. Um, but we'll make an extra effort on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to say, you were talking about the hotel, my daughter, uh, we're driving around, and to ch- come down Imperial Avenue and be able to look that way, and the hotel had all the lights on, it was like, oh, it actually is happening. They had all the, the room lights lit up and everything, it was, it was exciting to see that we're finally getting to the end of this.
To the end of the, light at the end of the tunnel, right? Good sight, thank you, Mister Mora, Mr. Lopez?
So just to echo what, uh, Nancy and Victor were saying earlier, um, check your emails. Uh, you will be getting invite from one of the two of them for next Friday. Uh, as you well know, uh, it's city's one hundred and twentieth birthday, and officially, it's probably, it's, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's actually on the day.
Wow.
So, it just coincided with, with what we're doing at the pool already, so we figured we pass out some goodies, uh, for free to the public. We would love to have the council there to kinda put you guys to work a little bit, uh, in the heat, so come in on by, bring your swim gear or your hydration, because it's gonna be a hot one next Friday, so. Uh, the, the next thing is just one, two, I know it's Parks and Rec month, but, uh, we couldn't do what we do without, uh, all the other departments that are, especially in special events and different things. So I wanna, uh, give a shout out to not only the Parks and Rec team, but everybody else that's involved, uh, citywide. Because these, these events and different things really take, it's a, it's a huge undertaking for everybody that's, that's, uh, participating or working it. So, uh, thanks to everybody that, uh, that helps us out during that process.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Stra.
I don't have anything to, to report, however, I was just gonna say thank you for the cybersecurity administrator position approved. It's gonna be very helpful for the city, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Reel?
Good evening, Mayor, um, just one thing, last Friday, we, our cadet program, they spent the entire week in San Diego. There was a hundred and ninety-three, I believe, that had started, they graduated a hundred and eighty-one. All seven of ours started and all seven of them finished. Um, s- a special shout out to Sergeant Corona Hernandez, Officer Salazar Bustamante Reyes, and with an emphasis on Officer Fiero, who spent the entire week up there ensuring that the kids had all the things that they needed, it was a, the, the graduation was outstanding, it was gigantic, and I was extremely surprised.
Good to hear, and congratulations, um, maybe one of these meetings we can bring the cadets over and we get to meet them.
So they're probably really tired, so they'll, they'll be back on the twenty-fourth, so that, we could certainly anticipate a date where we would present them for you. So they'll they'll be back on the twenty-four, so that we could certainly anticipate a day where we present them for you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, Chief Lancer?
Good evening. Um, so Imperial Valley sent a strike team uh to the Thompson Fire in Butte County. Alpatia, Clecsco Engine, Calpatia Personnel, Holtville, El Centro, Imperial County. And then the Enio County Engine is gonna meet up with them to form up, so a strike team is five engines of the same type. Uh, these are brush rigs, what we call type threes, uh, with a leader, um, a chief officer who is Chief Silva from Holtville. So just informational on that. Um, also, um, you've probably been seeing in the news, it's it's gonna be getting excessively hot. We're talking one teens up to one twenty, depending on where you're at. Um, of course, being out on the asphalt and working, you know, the temperature can be, you know, even more than that. Those of us who have worked out there. Uh, with that, uh, understand that, so uh just caution to everyone. Um, stay away from the heat as much as you can, and if you can't avoid it, stay hydrated.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Monriquez?
Um, first of all, thank you for a budget and uh patience on this process. Um, I know for next year, the. We already discussed coming up with a different uh uh schedule for you guys, so you don't have everything at at one meeting, so. For that, uh, that's on me and uh expect something uh better for next year. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Uh, I'd like to welcome three new hires in the last two weeks. Uh, so we'll go ahead and get the slideshow up for you. And for, uh, we'd like to introduce Jaden Alvarez, lifeguard one, uh, for Parks and Recreation. Uh, then we have Viviana Eliza Barajas. She's a literacy coordinator uh for the library. And we have Jalen Gutierrez, uh, recreation leader three for the library for um lunch at the library. And if you see them around, please give them a hu- a big warm welcome.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Yes, I actually have something this time. Uh, good news, we have some of our COVID project reimbursements finally trickling in. So we've gotten a few checks for that, so that's good news. Um, we received our award letter for the permanent local housing authority for the P L H A. So we got that going. We submitted our certification that we accept the terms, so we had the ten days to do that. We're waiting for our agreement. And that'll help us with the rehabilitation of our apartments. And then the last thing I have is our efforts to Washington paid off. We got a notice that we're gonna be getting eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Ruiz for our community park. So that was what I have. I don't know if you guys have any questions, if you want any more information.
Do you know what type of work will be done with that funding?
With which one? The?
Eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Um, we're thinking, we've been talking, we can probably use it to do the design engineering, get plans and specs and things like that. Get something shovel-ready, so once we can get more of the funding trickling in and get the overall amount to actually do the project. So that's our main idea is to use it for that, but if we find other, you know, avenues for it, if we can, you know, internally discuss, that's what we're gonna look to.
Thank you. Alright, um, with, how about our uh city attorney?
Oh, nothing to report.
Alright, we'll move on to our city manager.
Uh, yes, Council, just wanna wish everybody a happy fourth, a a safe and sane fourth. And just a reminder to folks that this, the city ordinance does allow discharge of safe and sane fireworks. We discourage use of the other sort of fireworks and there there will be uh police presence to. Uh, remind folks about uh illegal fireworks.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Then we'll start with our city clerk.
Nothing to add.
Alright, how about we go to this side, Ms. Abysse Martinez?
Um, my other hat um dropped off, the mana, the Imperial Valley, dropped off two pellets. Like big pellets into the cooling centers, water bottles, so those are available for people who might need them. They dropped them off with the County of Imperial Fire Department today, so. They have a lot of water over there. It will be dispersed out, I'm sure, to all the different cooling stations and it's hot. Drink your water. Or stay inside if you can. Get out of town. Have a happy Fourth of July. Hopefully, everybody stays out of uh hospitals and the emergency room.
Alright.
Nothing to report.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. And Miss uh Mendoza?
Um, just nothing necessarily to report, but I could, would like to ask if we can ensure that all the information on the cooling centers. Are put out on our social media, given the upcoming weather. We wanna make sure that information's available for the public.
Yes, I see, I I I believe we were, uh, we've done that, but I'll make sure.
Uh, if I can make a comment, we did. We went ahead and posted it. We have it up. Library is gonna be our cooling center and we have the operation hours Monday through Friday. From ten AM to seven PM, which is Monday through Thursday and Friday to eight AM to five PM. We also let them know on our Facebook and our Instagram, the other cooling centers and gave them a link to the public health. I believe that'll have all the additional information. Thank you so much.
Can you send us that link? I know that I had a couple uh from Ivy Press was asking for it. Appreciate it. Mr. Tucker?
I'm good. Thank you.
Alright, and last but not least, I know that uh last week I was able to attend our ICTC, or Local Imperial County Transportation Commission. And there was a couple of projects that were awarded. I know the City of Imperial filed for one of the projects, and if I remember right, it was. Around a two-million-dollar mark, if I remember around there. The eighty-six, so we applied for the eighty-six project for two million dollars and there's sixteen million in the. There's, we applied for ten, okay, because there's sixteen million in the pot. That uh, and it, yeah, and if I remember right, only uh five cities, there's only five projects in there, so. We actually have a pretty good chance of getting a a decent amount out of that. Um, and with that, uh, last Friday, uh, our city manager, Mr. Marita, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim Tucker, myself met with I I D. And talks with uh just general talks over City of Imperial I I D business and uh everything, everything, I think it went well. So definitely look forward to more talks like that, so. With that, wish everybody a great Fourth of July. Please be safe. Um, like we said, stay cool. Stay really cool, especially make sure you watch your pets. Um, and uh, thank you guys for all the hard work. And with that, I'll adjourn this meeting at eight seventeen.